Good evening, everyone. We will be reconvening our Monday, July 25, 2022 Dublin City Council meeting. And Mr. Reiner, may I ask you to lead the pledge of allegiance? This evening, we have a special presentation, and I'd like to invite our Director of the Dublin Arts Council, David Yon, to come forward along with Todd Smith to share some information about the artist in residency with us. Welcome, David.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. So Dublin Arts Council and the City of Dublin Parks and Recreation are honored to welcome artist Todd Smith back to Dublin for a two-week residency. The purpose of the residency is for the commissioned repair of one sculpture and the replacement of three sculptures which will be installed in Kaufman Park as part of the Dublin Art in Public Places Permanent Collection. Todd Smith is a graduate of Amherst College in Amherst, Massachusetts, where he refined his drawing and painting skills during the day. At night, Smith climbed the trees and buildings on and around campus. In his junior year, he decided to create artworks that presented the world from the trees' perspective that he had experienced on his nightly climbs. In 2007, Smith was awarded the Work Exchange Fellowship Position at the Mary Anderson Center for the Arts in Floyd's Knobs, Indiana. In this 400-acre nature sanctuary, Smith began his daily climb project through which he climbed a tree every day and journaled his experiences in a blog. In 2008, Dublin Arts Council curated the on loan exhibition Park Fiction with Jessie Levesque, a curator from Louisville, Kentucky. Jessie introduced Todd to DAC with a proposal that he create men in trees for the next exhibition. He created four exuvia, or exoskeletons, of his body. The artist wraps himself in cellophane and packing tape to create a cast, which is covered in fiberglass cloth and resin to form his own exoskeleton, purposefully creating shells, or exuvia, that play with reality. Four original exuvia sculptures were installed in 2008 in Kaufman Park and have garnered much popularity, adoration, and interest from the community. Over the years, three of the four original sculptures have been deinstalled due to damage from weather and natural forces. One original sculpture remains on view in the park. During the residency, the community has observed Smith creating the new and improved sculptures at the Dublin Arts Council. This past weekend, Smith facilitated two community workshops, engaging over 40 participants in a hands-on tapecasting method he uses to create his exuvia sculptures. Here are some comments from the workshop. "To learn about somebody else's vision, I think it's fun. It really opens your eyes and expands your vision to what's possible." Another participant. "This project uses all your senses, really. You hear it, you touch it, your arm gets sweaty inside of it, and all your senses come alive when you're doing this project." So the artwork created during these community workshops will be temporarily installed on Dublin Arts Council grounds on view during the pop-up exhibition and community reception this Friday, July 29, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. So all are welcome. I encourage all of council to join us for this celebration. The exuvia sculptures have become an important part of Dublin's landscape. We are so excited to engage the community in Smith's creative process and to bring new exuvia back to Kaufman Park. Now, it's my great pleasure to introduce artist Todd Smith. Todd?
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having me. It really has been a pleasure being back in Dublin after 14 years. I really want to thank the council for their support of the Dublin Arts Council. And it's allowed me to not only launch my career in 2008 with the Park Fiction show, and then from there, it's really impacted the public in a way that I could have never foreseen. So now, being back here and having a chance to meet Dublin residents who've interacted with these sculptures in the last few years, I've met people who have really fallen in love with the exuvia sculptures. One in particular has been a little... ...at the park every day and really kind of made an attachment to one of them, like a secret friend, and it really gave her some comfort and support being there. So she was devastated when she found that it had fallen. She had even had a birthday party that was the guy in the tree-themed birthday party. So she really loves this sculpture, and it's been amazing to come back here and meet her. She's come and visited me every day since I've been here, and she will continue to visit me every day. She was at the workshop yesterday as well. So it's just an honor to be a part of the Art in Public Places that your funding and support has allowed. So thank you again so much.
Todd, we really appreciate that, and what a great story to hear about that little girl, to think that it touches someone so closely, and especially a young person who has the opportunity to see artwork come together from an adult's perspective, and it reaches across to her. We have a little letter here that I'd like to read to you. "Dear Todd, on behalf of Dublin City Council, we want you to know how much we appreciate your outstanding contributions to the public art in our city. Exuvia has been an extraordinary installment and perfectly accentuates its natural setting in Kaufman Park. We are honored that you're returning to our city for a two-week residency this month, and we're thrilled that the commissioned replacement of the exuvia sculptures will be part of our permanent collection for the renowned Dublin Art in Public Places. We applaud the opportunities that community members will have to learn more about your creative practices and participate in a workshop during your residency. So thank you for sharing your talent with Dublin. I wish you continued success and look forward to seeing your latest creations." And that's from all of us here on City Council. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I would only add that it's really nice to put a face to the body. What I've seen so many times headed to the rec center, that hanging in that tree there, it's good to put a face with that body.
The next part of our meeting this evening is our citizens' comments, and this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. So is there anyone present here who wishes to make a comment? Or have any comments been received online? None? All right. Following this is our consent agenda. Is there a request to remove any of our items from the consent agenda this evening from council? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. A second, please. Thank you. Jenny, would you please call roll?
Ms. Sam Rosgrooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
There are no ordinances for second reading this evening. For first reading, ordinance 28-22.
Authorizing the provision of certain incentives to Ray &amp; Associates, Inc. to induce it to purchase a facility to retain and expand its corporate headquarters and its associated operations and workforce, all within the city, and authorizing the execution of an economic development agreement.
I'll introduce it.
Our staff report this evening is from our Economic Development Director, Jennifer Cluse. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, members of council. We have been in discussions with Ray &amp; Associates regarding their new headquarter project and expansion of their company in Dublin. Ray &amp; Associates was established in Dublin in 1988 and has reached capacity at its Dublin facility located at 5775 Perimeter Drive. As a result, Ray has been conducting a competitive real estate search for expansion opportunities to establish a national headquarters in central Ohio. Ray &amp; Associates is a full-service regional accounting and business advisory firm that offers accounting, tax, audit, and consulting in cyber services to clients primarily through the state of Ohio. The Ohio CPA firm is also regarded as one of the top 100 public accounting firms in the country. To meet expansion needs, Ray is considering the purchase of an office location in the city of Dublin that would retain and establish a new corporate headquarters in the community. The economic development agreement proposed is 18% on income tax withholdings for seven years, valued at $283,000, in consideration of the company's continued investment in planned workforce growth in Dublin. The project retains 68 employee positions within the city and also expects to create 35 new positions within the city by December 31, 2028. Staff recommends that council approve this ordinance on August 8, and I will be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Is there any public comment concerning this particular ordinance, first reading? No? Council, do we have any questions for Jennifer? No?
I'd just like to reiterate, you know, they have always been such wonderful community residents, and, you know, their boardroom is so frequently used for public activities and things. So I'm pleased to see them locating, and I'm particularly pleased that this is tied with an acquisition of property. Thanks for your work on that.
Thank you.
I agree. They've been a long-term resident here, corporate resident, great corporate resident. The second reading for this particular ordinance in public hearing will occur on August 8, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ordinance 29-22.
Authorizing the provision of a certain incentive to CPS Solutions LLC to induce it to lease a facility to retain and expand its office and its associated operations and workforce, all within the city, and authorizing the execution of an economic development agreement.
I'll introduce it.
Our staff report this evening will be from Economic Development Administrator Jenna Goeing. Jenna?
Good evening, members of council. We have been in discussions with CPS Solutions on the expansion of their company here in Dublin. CPS Solutions is one of the nation's leading providers of pharmacy and hospital solutions. CPS's services include inpatient pharmacy solutions, specialty and ambulatory pharmacy solutions, supply chain and materials management services, and more. CPS is considering a 20,000-square-foot facility in Dublin to provide specialty pharmacy call center services to specialty pharmacy patients on behalf of CPS's clients. The economic development agreement proposed is for 20% on income tax withholdings for three years, valued up to $83,000. The project would be the second additional location here in Dublin and expects to retain 43 existing employee positions within the city. In addition, the company expects to create 47 new employee positions for a total of 90 employees within the city by the end of 2025. The state of Ohio is also proposing economic development incentives to CPS to retain and expand its workforce and investments in Ohio. This competitive project also considered Indiana, Florida, and Minnesota during the site selection process. Staff recommends council approves this ordinance on August 8, and I'm happy to answer any questions council has at this time.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this? Council, do we have any questions for Jenna? All right. Well, we will be coming back to this on August 8 for our second reading. Thank you. All right. Introduction and public hearing on resolutions. Resolution 36-22.
Adopting the City of Dublin Strategic Framework.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Our staff report this evening is from our Assistant City Manager, Homer Rogers.
Good evening, members of council. On June 21, during the last council workshop, staff proposed a new City of Dublin strategic framework. At that time, council directed that framework be brought forward for formal adoption. Resolution 3622 now comes before you for that purpose with some modification. The following slides reflect the proposed language contained in the resolution, so I'll only be presenting a few highlights. First, it was suggested that the year 2035 be dropped, and so we will refer to this as the City of Dublin, Ohio's strategic framework and not reference a specific year. Next, staff is not proposing a change to the current purpose or mission statement, but did propose a new vision statement. Based on input received from council on June 21, the new proposed vision statement reads, "Dublin, Ohio is the most sustainable, connected, and resilient global city of choice." Again, staff is not recommending the city's values and guiding principles be revised, so these will remain the same. You may recall this graphic from the workshop. It is the same graphic with the new vision statement and one other change under the connected goals heading. The city manager sent council an email earlier today speaking to this, and I'm going to skip forward a couple of slides and point this out in more detail. As I skip forward, there are no new proposed changes under the heading of most sustainable, so everything you see on this slide is the same. So here is the proposed change to what was presented on June 21. Previously, staff had broadband as a separate goal from infrastructure, but after further consideration, staff recommends it be considered together, so we combine the two, and to read as you see on the screen. So infrastructure now reads, "A city with state-of-the-art, reliable, and safe water, power, sanitary sewer, stormwater, waterways, and thoroughfares, along with a broadband capability that ensures 10-gigabit access to all residents, businesses, and visitors." Next, staff believes that we need to call more attention to a specific goal of land use, and hence, the community plan. So land use is added as a proposed goal with the verbiage as you see it on the screen and in the revised resolution 3622 now before council. I'll read it for the benefit of the public. "Land use: A city that prides itself as the leader in innovation, conscientiousness, and forward-thinking as it addresses the current and future needs of the community in terms of design, development, consistency, and growth in its built-in natural environments." And finally, staff is not recommending any changes from the previously proposed language for the most resilient goals, with the exception of adding the words "programming" and "resources" to the physical goal statement. These additions were suggested at the workshop as well. At this point, staff recommends the adoption of resolution 3622 with the alterations presented tonight, and I stand by for any questions you may have as you consider and discuss the proposal.
Do we have any public comment on this? None? Discussion? Any comments? Councilmember DeRosa?
Homer, I just wanted to say how much I appreciate staff work. I know we've been working on this for some times. You know, these vision and strategy statements are never easy, right? Because they're meant to be big, big goals and big visions. So I just want to say how much I appreciate all the work on that.
Thank you.
The only suggestion that I might make is back on your connected the 10 gig. We might put a minimum of because in a year, if, since we've removed the year of this, in a year from now, 10 gig may not be what we want. It may be, it may be much bigger than that, right? So I would just put that in there to make it a little more evergreen, but I think it's well-written, and I think it's clear, and I appreciate staff's work on that. So thank you.
I'm also glad to see that you put broadband under infrastructure because I think that's exactly where it belongs and really elevated and called out land use. I think it's really appropriate.
So I certainly don't want to take a step backward, but the last time we talked about the vision statement, that word is. When I think of the word is, to me, is means right now. It's not a future state. And to me, a vision statement is a statement of the future. So me personally, I would change the wording to be the most sustainable, connected, and resilient global city of choice. Just me.
Andy, I was thinking the exact same thing. I don't know that I'd put any words in. I'd just take is out. Dublin, Ohio, the most sustained, the most sustainable, connected, and resilient global city of choice. I don't, I don't know if I would put a different word in, but I would take the word is out. That had occurred to me as well.
So?
I don't want to muddle the waters. I'm totally fine with is, but if you take the is out, then it's not a fragment, it's not a sentence anymore. So it's not a statement. But I, I mean, our vision is to be the best. I mean, that is our vision. I mean, whether it happens today, tomorrow, or 20 years from now. It's semantics at this point.
I was just going to comment, when you read about vision statements and their definition, it is the state of what you aspire to be. So it's not, it's not to be, but you put yourself out there and say, this is who we are. Therefore, Dublin, Ohio is. That's kind of how, I think, when you read about vision statements. But that might be getting a little bit too in the weeds, but just, that was, that was the, that was the concept.
I'm fine with the is. I mean, you could throw in, you could say Dublin, Ohio, colon, the most, the most sustainable, whatever.
You could do that.
You could do that, and it would make it, it would satisfy the grammatical issues with taking the word is out. I'm okay with is. Yeah, I think you're, you're right that it's, it is, it should be a forward-looking statement, but your vision is what your, what your vision is today. So I'm okay with leaving is in. If you really have heartburn over it, replace the is with a semicolon and call it, or a colon and call it a day.
Any other comments here before we decide whether the is is or isn't?
I was getting ready to say it depends on what the definition of the word is is, so.
You know, my thought is, and I think I agree with Dana here. I think when you say vision, it's the future. And Dublin is that in the future. To me, is is, is a visionary statement. That's what we will be, and we will be able to say that about ourselves. So, so let's just take a little hand vote on giving Homer some direction on the is and/or isn't. So who wants to leave is in? All right. We'll just leave it be. Well, we, we have another chance to talk about this. Oh, yeah, that's right. We, we have to call a vote on this one. So we're leaving it as it is. it is, and there are no other recommendations or changes. All right. So Jenny, will you please call roll?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yep.
Resolution 37-22.
Appointing a member to the Board of Zoning Appeals to the City of Dublin.
I'll introduce it.
Our staff report is Vice Mayor DeRosa this evening.
Yes, thank you. The work of our boards and commissions is vital to success of our city. We currently have one vacancy to fill and unexpired term on the Board of Zoning Appeals. I'm delighted to say that as always, wonderful applications are ready and willing to serve this community, and we thank them very much for stepping forward. The Adminstrating Committee and Council conducted interviews, and I'm pleased to bring forward a resolution for council's approval to appoint Dan Garvin to the Board of Zoning Appeals for an unexpired term ending March 31st, 2023.
Thank you. Are there any questions concerning this appointment? Counsel, Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Resolution 38-22.
Accepting the preliminary plat for 4,000 West Dublin-Grenville Road to subdivide plus or minus 1.98 acres to dedicate right-of-way for the future development of Village Parkway.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Staff report this evening is from our planner Zach Lonschel. Welcome, Zach.
Thank you. Good evening. Before you tonight is a resolution for the acceptance of a preliminary plat for 4,000 West Dublin-Grenville Road. The site is highlighted in yellow on your screen. This sits just north of West Dublin-Grenville Road. It's currently a vacant site that is zoned within the Sawmill Center neighborhood. Shown on the screen is the street network map for the Bridge Street District. Site is highlighted opaquely at the center of the screen. This site does include on the west portion of the site, the future extension of Village Parkway, which intersects with West Dublin-Grenville Road. The applicant is proposing to subdivide this parcel to allow for the future extension and the future right-of-way for Village Parkway. It should be noted that the extension will not be constructed, be required to be constructed with the development of the site, as it's been determined by staff that it's not required, as access is already provided off of West Dublin-Grenville Road. So shown on the screen is the preliminary plat. On the left or on the west side of the property, you can see the Village Parkway right-of-way. This will be a 70-foot right-of-way as determined by our city engineer, and this will be maintained by the developer until this is implemented in the future by the city. That leaves a 1.56-acre site, which is labeled Lot 1 at the center of the screen. With this, the applicant will be vacating existing 56-foot building line, 20-foot utility easement, and a 100-foot landscape buffer, all of which were plotted with the development of the lowest parcel to the north. These are in conflict with the requirements within the Bridge Street District. So in order to develop in accordance with the Bridge Street District requirements, they are being vacated. Additionally, to the north and the east side of this property, you'll see a public access easement. Those will be to access both public and private open spaces that the developer are proposing with their proposal in the future. So staff has reviewed this application to all required preliminary plat criteria and recommended approval to Plan and Zoning Commission with the three conditions on your screen. Plan and Zoning Commission did recommend approval to city council on June 9th, and with that, staff is recommending acceptance of the resolution tonight. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Do we have any public comment on this? All right. Counsel, do we have any questions for Zach this evening?
I actually have a question. Zach, so I was looking at the developer's proposal, their, their engineering plans here, and is the, from how I can tell, they're actually developing within that future roadway? It looks like their curb is, and they have a grass tree lawn, and then eventually they'll put a sidewalk in that?
So in the engineer plan, they're building out to the edge of that property. So where the edge of the right-of-way in their property, they're building on that. They won't be building into the right-of-way.
Oh, okay. So I'm just reading it wrong then, because it says, I see the proposed right-of-way line dotted, like the north-south line, and then the curb is to the west of it.
Yes. Some of their plans, they do show a potential orientation of this Village Parkway extension, but they're not, they won't be proposing that with this.
Okay, so that plan, which is, that has been approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. But it's not encroaching on the plat. We're dividing the parcels today, then?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Any other questions, Chris?
So there was discussion about this regarding the drive-through for some user, and this is in the Bridge Street District, and that is not a permitted use. So can you tell me a little bit about how it got a positive staff recommendation, having not met the code?
Sure. So drive-throughs, they are considered conditional uses within the district, and I believe in all districts. There are use-specific standards that call out specific zoning districts where they are only permitted to be accompanying a bank. Those are the historic transition, and there is one additional district. All other districts, they're permitted to accompany other uses as long as they receive a conditional use. So in this case, drive-through is conditionally allowed in accompanying a drive-through, or well, a drive-through restaurant.
But only for a bank?
Not within the zoning district. The zoning district allows, when approved as a conditional use, it can accompany a restaurant user.
I, I'm just not certain that we want to have a drive-through in, in front of Lowe's. I think that we've worked really hard in this district to limit the drive-through uses, the auto-oriented uses, and this is going to be a very auto-oriented. In the drawings, you see the stacking is going to wrap around most of the building and, at times, could block entry doors into the building. And I think we wanted this to feel different than the other side of Sawmill Road, and to me, it, it's not really going to, because we've, the way the site plan is, and I'm sure you all studied it as well, you're going to have a lot of stacking around the individual buildings. So I'm not terribly supportive of this. I don't know if anyone else has any of those same concerns, but this is 161, you know, right, right on the frontage.
If I may clarify too as well, so what's before you is just the creation of those lots. The Planning and Zoning Commission actually already approved the conditional use to permit the drive-through there, just so that that's clear in terms of what action has already been taken. So the applicant has gone through a concept plan, a preliminary development plan with the conditional use, which were approved by the planning commission. So they have a final development plan step and a final plat that would be left. So before you tonight is just the creation of those, the lot and the future right-of-way.
Right, but if that doesn't happen, that, that needs to happen at some point.
Any other comments?
No, I agree with Chris. We've had a couple of problems with this kind of thing, and McDonald's would be one of them, where we had the kind of stacking that really didn't turn out, and sometimes even Tim Hortons. So no, you know, I'm not excited about the idea of the, of the drive-through. I think it's wrong place for that, and it could actually, if there's enough people, actually block the entryway on Banker Drive. So I, I just don't think it's a great idea.
Just to follow up on Jenny's comment, though, again, the application before you is just the plat, and really, it is only the right-of-way portion, which the city has asked them to dedicate to the city. Clarify if I'm wrong, but the whole application is just for that strip before you that we're asking them to dedicate to us, so that we have the option of extending Village Parkway. So it won't, they can do their full development without this plat approval. And again, the conditional use is within the purview of planning commission, and the planning commission has already voted on it.
So just to be clear on this, if this is not voted on the plat as a positive way, we will lose that, we, we will lose the right-of-way and the ability to, in the future, extend that parkway. Right?
Right. That's correct.
And, and I want to make a comment too about the fact that I know a little bit about the history of this. This is a very restricted partial in that it has deed restrictions on it placed by Lowe's, and the Planning and Zoning Commission was very strict and adamant about the street frontage being very active with patio frontage on both ends, breaking it up, making sure that it, it created a streetscape, and the ask was to have a drive-through that was very heavily landscaped and buffered and, and only accessed from the rear of the property, so you would not see a drive-through from the street. So I think, I believe that Planning and Zoning gave that quite a bit of energy to try to create what was a very difficult site to develop within the Bridge Street Code into something that would become a really nice amenity along 161. So I'm comfortable from the, what I know about it, that the drive-through would not be a detriment, that I think that we, the trade-off is great, I would say that.
I do think the drive-through is a detriment, and as I phrased my question to you, my, my question was, how did it get positive staff support, having not, that was the question that I asked. I understand where we are, but, you know, I, we probably can learn some things about having gotten here of, this was not the vision, this wasn't the intent, and, you know, and I'll refer to my question again was, how did we get a positive staff recommendation?
So the concept plan, when that was brought forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission, staff did recommend disapproval of that, and the commission recommended approval at that point. So when we move forward with the next step, the applicant adhered to the comments that the Planning and Zoning Commission made, which was increasing the activity along the streetscape, as well as then increasing the buffering and a setback of that drive-through lane, so that you would not see that as clearly, so keeping existing landscaping and adding additional landscaping, that that was adhered to with the next step, which was staff's recommendation of approval, was they met what the Planning and Zoning Commission had asked for. So we then brought forward that recommendation. Again, this, as Mayor Fox pointed out, this is a really challenging site with deed restrictions, which again, are not our responsibility, and which was part of the conversation at Planning Commission, was ultimately how to help this site develop, but within the parameters of what they're permitted to do on their site, and was there trying to strike some balance that Planning Commission felt that this was appropriate to allow them to have that.
Any other comments or questions? All right. We will be calling roll for accepting the preliminary plat for 4,000 West Dublin-Grenville Road to subdivide plus or minus 1.98 acres to dedicate right-of-way for the future development of Village Parkway. Jenny, will you please call roll?
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes. Resolution, thank you, Jenny, and thank you, Zach. Resolution 39-22.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Dublin City Schools for the School Resource Officer Program.
I'll introduce it.
Our staff report this evening is Deputy Chief Tabernick. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of council. Thank you for providing me with a few minutes to talk about the mutually beneficial and our positive partnership with the Dublin Police Department and the Dublin City Schools. As you can see in your packet, we're requesting the authority for the city manager to renew the contract for the School Resource Officer Program during the upcoming 2022-2023 school year. This will be our 24th year for the SRO program and a continuation of a longstanding partnership between the Dublin City Schools, the city, and the Dublin Police Department. Our community education unit provides full-time SROs for each middle school, each high school, and then the middle school SROs maintain responsibility for one or more elementary school. SROs focus on safety and crime prevention, as well as counseling and education for the youth in our community. The SRO program's primary focus is creating a safe learning environment for all Dublin City School students with the following overarching goals: Developing an atmosphere conducive to learning; Bridging the gap between police officers and juveniles; Increasing positive attitudes towards law enforcement; Encouraging more cooperation between juveniles and the police; And reducing juvenile crime. Another hallmark of Dublin's SRO program is that it's based on input from school administration, from teachers, faculty, and students. In line with that concept, the Dublin Police Department took community feedback over the past two years from the chief's advisory committee, which included in-depth conversations about the SRO program, school safety, and active threat preparedness and response. School resource officers and supervisors spoke to the committee about their role and function within the schools, offering space for community members to ask detailed questions about the guiding principles of the program, as well as the training each SRO receives before their placement in the schools. Conversations centered on an SRO's counseling role, how officers assist with the overall safety at and around the school, how officers work to build strong relationships with students, and how they can connect with students, how they can connect the students with mental health support and resources. Furthermore, the city will be hosting a tabletop exercise in collaboration with Dublin City Schools, with the Washington Township Fire Department, Centaro, and other community stakeholders later this week. Our exercise strives to ensure that all partners proactively communicate in order to leverage shared and available resources in preparation for a critical incident that we hope never happens at one of our schools. Dublin Police remains confident that the ongoing partnership, training, and dialogue with the school district are all highly beneficial to the young people in our community. Thanks for your time and the consideration. Staff recommends approval of resolution 3922, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments concerning this? Counsel, do you have any questions for Deputy Chief Tabernick? Kathy?
I would just make a comment during my still relatively brief tenure on council. Every year when you come back, the program evolves, more input is received, more feedback, more engagement, and I applaud that, and thank you for your, your great work on this and your continued evolution on what I think is one of the most important programs that we have. So thank you, thank you for continuing to build best practice for us.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Keeler?
I just want to congratulate you on your recent accomplishments with the FBI. It's a huge feather in our cap, and then yours. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Could you just explain a little bit for the public, because this speaks to more the high schools and middle schools, the elementary schools, because I know there's some sharing of resources there. Could you just give us a little information about that in case people that have children in the elementary schools might wonder about the Resource Officer Program there?
Absolutely. It's a great question, and definitely some information that I know everyone is interested in. I also have a child at an elementary school, so I would be very interested in that information as well. Our middle school SROs have responsibility for elementary schools. Several have multiple elementary schools, and they spend their time as much as they can at those elementary schools while also maintaining connectivity to the middle schools. So what that looks like on a daily basis, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you. However, what I would say is they maintain connectivity with all of those schools, with school administrators, with faculty. They maintain connectivity as far as safety planning goes, safety drills. Each school does quarterly minimum safety drills. So our SROs, our middle school SROs are heavily connected at those elementary schools and heavily connected with, with the staff, the faculty, the administrators at those schools as well.
I appreciate that. I know that's on the mind of a lot of parents, and that'll give them some comfort to understand that, you know, we have all of that. We're doing the very best we can for that safety issue. So thank you very much. If there aren't any other questions or discussions, Jenny, will you please call roll?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Thank you. So other business this evening is about our Community Attitudes Survey, and our staff report is from our Communications and Public Information Director, Lindsay Weisenhour.
Good evening, members of council. We regularly survey our residents in a variety of ways and on a variety of topics. While we continually evaluate new and emerging survey tools and platforms, we also, with council's support, regularly invest in high-quality scientific surveys, such as the Community Attitudes Survey, which measures satisfaction levels, charts any changes in satisfaction, and allows residents to express their opinions on a variety of issues and initiatives. This year, the Community Attitudes Survey was administered between April 29th and May 22nd. Similar studies were conducted in 2013 and most recently in 2016. Of course, much has changed since 2016. in 2016. Of course, much has changed since 2016, but I am pleased to report that the overall satisfaction with the city of Dublin has not. So with that, I would like to invite Dr. Marty Saperstein, President of Saperstein Associates, which has been conducting surveys for the city of Dublin and surrounding communities since 1980. He and his team conducted the survey this summer, and he is here to share the results of this year's Community Attitudes Survey with you.
So you stole my thunder.
I don't give away too much.
So I am absolutely delighted to be here tonight to share the results of the 2022 Dublin Community Attitudes Survey. There are some occasions when I present, and the news unfortunately is not so good. Having said that, if you see on the slide, I feel that these surveys serve two purposes. One is to give the community a voice, but also for you, for members of council, to balance what you hear when residents call, or email, or approach you at Kroger's, or any number of ways, including when they come here to speak. So for me, this survey moves from the anecdotal to the systematic and balances the anecdotal, because oftentimes, that's most memorable. With that said, let me talk a little bit about methodology, because when we met last time to discuss the methodology, there were some questions about it, and I want you to feel comfortable with the gathering of the data, which leads, of course, to the findings. So the first thing I want to tell you is that these were telephone interviews, not online, that were conducted with a random sample of 400 registered voters living in the city. So you may think that for a city with approximately 34,000 adults, 400 interviews is a pretty skimpy sample. But consider this, the United States has 331 million people, of which 258 million are adults. If you go to the Gallup website, what you'll find is that the most common sample size in both academia and in commercial research is 1,000. 1,000 interviews for 258 million adults. This is one of the reasons I went into this business, because it's like magic that this works. And when we're done tonight, you will believe me that it's like magic. Okay, so enough of that. Let's press on. Okay, average length was 21 minutes. This is a very loquacious community, so when you can finally get somebody on the phone, it's hard to get rid of them. Oops. As Lindsay said, this was data collection between the end of April, end of May. Ninety-four percent of these interviews were conducted on cellphones, not landlines. And this is a sort of a seismic change from the early days when people called landlines, which were household devices. And in those days, and I'm almost embarrassed to say this, out of every 10 phone calls we made that were answered, a woman answered the phone. It was, you could hear in the background, the residual from the husband, "Honey, get the phone." But now, with cellphones, it's become a personal device. So the person who answers the phone is typically the person we'll speak to. In the old days, you didn't want to interview 70% women, so you had to like ask for the person in the household who's having the next birthday. Older people would tell you, "We've already had our birthdays." So it was, it was a complicated process. But now, we're happy with landlines. We're happy that landlines are falling from the sample. Margin of error for a sample consisting of 400 interviews is less than or equal to plus or minus 4.9 percentage points. I'm going to get in the weeds for just a little bit, because I usually don't say what follows, but in your case, given the results you have, this is important. So notice before the plus or minus 4.9, it says, "Less than or equal to." So what does that mean? Why is that there? So imagine a question that's got two categories, yes or no. And let's say it's 50% yes and 50% no. That's what the 4.9 applies to, when the variance in the data is the greatest. But let's say the data were 80/20, that 4.9 becomes 4.1 percentage points. So when there's less variance in the data, the accuracy actually increases. I mean, imagine if everybody had the same opinion, all 100% of the people, wouldn't matter who you spoke to, you know, we'd get the same result. And you will see in a minute how this applies to this survey and to your community. Sampling frame came from the boards of elections, from Delaware Franklin and Union County, and this was just shocking to me. To complete the interviews, we needed to call 14,743 unique telephone numbers, many of which were dialed more than five times. Why do we do that? Because we don't want people who are home all the time to do all the interviews. We want to make sure we give people multiple opportunities. So as Lindsay said, we previously did this, did the survey in 2016, and the comparable number of unique numbers we dialed was 4,125. Humor me just for a little, because I want to show you how that happens. So total numbers dialed, 2022, 2016, they're the numbers I just gave you. So working household numbers, so 82% this year, but it was 93%. And as you go through and see what happens to our numbers, what you realize is that to get to the 400 interviews in both years, we completed those 400. There was 3% of the total. In 2016, it was 10%. So it was 3.3 times as difficult. And the way that we look at it is this way. It took 37 telephone numbers to get one completed interview this year, but 10 in 2016. And when I started in 1980, it took four. We'd buy four numbers, and we'd have numbers left over. So the question that I want you to think about, as we move through the data, is given how difficult it is to get people on the phone, does the data still seem reliable? Because if it doesn't, then you've sort of wasted everyone's time and your money. So here we go. Oh, okay. So then, throughout the analysis that follows, where appropriate, I've taken out the people who said don't know for questions like chipper service. We didn't want someone providing an opinion about something they didn't know. So when people respond, it's the things they're aware of. Okay. So collectively, residents who completed an interview are representative of your community on several key dimensions. So you see age, you see gender, you see ward, and you can compare census data to survey data. Eh, not perfect, but pretty close. So we feel confident that at least demographically, this represents the community. And then here, what I'm going to do throughout the presentation is compare the 2022 numbers with the 2016 numbers and the 2013 numbers. And you'll notice there's not a huge amount of change. There were some up and down in some of these categories, but you can see an increase in the Asian community from 12 to 14 to 18. Not much change in the African-American community. Marriage reverted from its 69% low in 16 back to mid 70s. Really, not a lot of change in the makeup of the community. I mean, the percentage of retired homemakers dropped, the percentage of retired is pretty similar. Okay, overall impressions. So impressions of Dublin as a place to live are almost universally positive, as they were in 2016 and 2013. In fact, most residents, once again, consider Dublin an excellent place to live. Let that soak in for a moment. So the way this is, where these numbers come from is we say A is excellent, B is good, C average, D, just like in school. So not only do you have 99% giving an excellent or good, but roughly three-quarters of the residents are saying excellent, A grade for Dublin as a place to live. And you'll see it here, but you'll see it also on the following slides. How much changed since 2013? Almost nothing. How reliable is this? Well, it's got to be pretty reliable. There's almost no variance in the data. Like, everybody's happy. How do you do that? That's a different story. Okay. So then the next question, similar, but this says Dublin is a place to work, and here, impressions are similar. 96% evaluate Dublin as a place to work as either excellent or good. And wow, when you see 2016 and 2013, you don't see a lot of, if I had known this in advance, I just would have penciled in the 2022 numbers. What's interesting, though, is if you look at this variable, this question by age, it seems like the younger age cohort is less likely to think Dublin is an excellent place to work, which shouldn't surprise us. And, and I point this out, because there are some things you expect to see in the data, that if you don't see them, you're going, hmm, I don't know. This is one of them I expected to see as those folks cast their net more widely. So how about Dublin as a place to retire? Fewer residents, though still a significant majority, so now we have 75%, rate Dublin highly as a place to retire. So that 75% is lower than a place to live, and as a place to work, but higher than it was in 2016 and 2013. So even where the numbers are not knocking against the roof, you're still making progress from what's essentially a decade ago. And what's interesting here is if you look at just the people that said excellent, the A grade, if you look at the youngest cohort, that was a little surprising. That group was the most likely to say as a place to retire, excellent. And, and that may be, because Dublin isn't what it was 20 years ago, so they're seeing all the things that are here now, and going, yeah, this is not so bad. I'm not, you know, I'm not going to Florida for this. So that, interesting. It's interesting, and those folks should be, that seed should be planted. Okay. So though not a single issue, problem, or concern was mentioned by more than one resident in four, and this was a response to an open-ended question, those mentioned most often involve safety, keeping residents safe, that's a big issue, but it's up from the earlier surveys, that's a 10 percentage point increase. And then managing traffic, managing traffic is interesting, because in 2016, it was 26%. Four percentage points is really small, but it's the right direction, because with the roundabout being adjusted, that may have had some influence. And maintaining quality schools dropped a little, but we had a new category, managing crowded schools, which is down at the, at the bottom. But it's fair to say that there's, even in response to an open-ended question, there's not sort of this major problem that half the population is mobilizing around. Okay. Public facilities. This is one of my favorite pictures. We sort of borrowed them from the website, and this is just the great, whoever took these shots. Okay. So satisfaction with Dublin's public facilities is high. So Parks, Library, bike, shared use paths, rec center, condition of your street, outdoor swimming pools, parking in historic Dublin. Okay, so this is all the 2022 data, and the lowest is parking in historic Dublin at, look at that, 82%. When you compare it to the 2016 and 13 data, look at the library. The library was 96%. This year, it's 99%. But look at the size of the very satisfied bar. I mean, once you get close to 100%, you can't, you can't go up anymore. So the only place you can make up ground is just more in the top category, right? So it's almost like 90% for a library. And this is one of those issues where if that number had not gone up, you would have kicked me out, because it couldn't possibly be reliable without that, without that change being reflected. And what was built next to the library? A parking garage. And if you look at parking in historic Dublin, 82 now doesn't seem so bad, because look where it was in 2013, and it got a little bump in 2016, but still way below what happened. So when you see library and parking in historic Dublin, it tells me people on the phone were listening to the questions and reacting accordingly. Okay, how about city services? So here we have curbside, chipper, leaf collection, city-sponsored events, trash recycling, all high. Not only all high, but look at the size of the very satisfied portion, the dark green portion of the bar. And look at the data from 2016 and 2013. So then you talk about, like, we moved from landlines to cellphones, you know, the, the whole world is different with respect to surveying, but regardless of that, we get, results are believable, in part because they are very similar to what we've seen, when these services probably haven't changed for most people significantly. They were good, they are good. And then even Dora, which is essentially new to Dublin, was well-received, right? 96% either very or somewhat satisfied. And then satisfaction with recreation, programming, snow removal on the streets, mosquito control, compost, the composting program and snow removal on shared use paths, really all numbers very high. This, this last two, the composting program and the shared use path snow removal were new this year. Okay, how about city officials? It's better when you're sitting in your chairs. Okay, so here, once again, satisfaction also is high, the performance of city officials. So maintaining architectural standards, planning for the future, managing cities' finances, managing commercial growth, flow of traffic, listening to residents before making decisions, managing residential growth and development. All high. Not as high as some of the services, but you're all at least eight out of 10. And if you look at the previous two surveys, you really don't see much change, with one possible exception. So if you start at maintaining architectural standards, you'll see sort of up and down, numbers close, you won't see a trend. But if you look all the way over here at managing residential growth and development, it's a little slight stair-step pattern going down. And this is what drives me crazy, when the, when the data are so strong, is start making a big deal out of small differences. Otherwise, you have nothing like to talk about. So, so I put the question mark after a trend of potential interest, not because I think it's an issue, but I point it out so it doesn't become an issue. But if you notice, that's the only one with the stair-step pattern there. Police Department. Police department. Nearly all residents are very satisfied with the Dublin police overall. So in most of those sentences I just wrote, nearly all residents are satisfied, but here it's very satisfied, right? 97% said very or somewhat satisfied. Probably 80% are very satisfied. And if you look at 2013 and 2016, not much has changed. Okay, so then there's four questions about the police. We ask because they're part of some certification program. So here, nearly all residents agree that the Dublin police keep neighborhoods safe, are well-trained, competent professionals, treat residents with dignity and respect, and do a good job communicating with the community. And if you look at those bars, look at the size of the dark green portion. Way larger than the agree moderately's. And it seems like we're getting similar results relative to 2016 and 2013. All right, how about the Bridge Street District? So impressions of the Bridge Street District are almost universally positive. Very positive impressions, though, have grown significantly since 2016, before much of the vision had become a reality. So I'm just going to go back. So when you look at those two, you think, well, 87%, 97%, not a big deal. But you look at the very positive, that's a substantial change in attitudes. And then we said, well, what other things would you like the Bridge Street District or other similar developments to include? And nothing was mentioned by more than one resident in five, and that was entertainment. And in the, the book that carries all of the data, there are verbatim comments as to what each of those categories might mean in more detail. We've given you some examples. But here, entertainment activities, shopping, retail, you know, now you're getting into one in eight. And that goes on to area features, arts, traffic improvements, down to, you know, 3%. So when I see that, I think, gee, there's, there's nothing major that's not provided, that folks want to see a lot more of. In fact, 20% couldn't think of anything. How about the arts? So satisfaction with the arts in Dublin is high, though neither universal nor strong, right? These bars are lower than the bars in the services. And this is a time where we see the very satisfied portion of the bar is smaller than the somewhat satisfied. And if we compare that to 2016, we didn't ask these questions in 2013, two things jump out. If you look at public art, the numbers went up a couple percentage points, really stayed the same. If you look at art galleries, the numbers went up a couple percentage points, stayed the same. But the two items that had performing in them went down, not a lot, but it is worth noting that the two items that had performing in them went down a little bit. And this is one of those areas where you think, gee, in two years from now, will that go down more? So I don't make a big deal out of it, but it's, I think, worth at least noticing. And then we said, when residents are invited to suggest additional performances, events and venues they'd like to see, 54% said nothing, couldn't come up with any comment. And those who did, you can see the suggestions were scattered from performing arts to venues, to events and festivals, to music concerts, and then a whole bunch of other things that each got 3% or less. You're right, priorities. So residents were told of six initiatives. And that was in a randomized order, so you don't want to bias anybody. And then we asked which one of them the city should make its highest priority. So what were the six? So one was expanding the city's mental wellness resources. Two, increasing the city's mobility options for all residents. And we were debating about the word mobility options, but when we pre-tested, we didn't have a problem. People seemed to know what mobility options are. Promoting health and wellbeing by protecting the environment, including the community's natural resources and ecosystems. Supporting Dublin's long-term economic growth without harming the city's social, environmental and cultural aspects. Sometimes called economic sustainability, raising Dublin's profile as a destination city and investing in broadband to improve the quality and speed of internet access. So remember, the question was, well, which should be the highest priority? Okay, so this is from the smallest percentage of highest priority up. Okay, so increasing mobility, 7%. Raising the profile of the city to be a destination, 9%. Expanding mental health resources, 13%. Investing in broadband, 15%. Promoting health wellbeing by protecting the environment, 19%. And 36% supporting Dublin's long-term economic sustainability. But wait, there's more. And what I didn't tell you is we asked the question, what should be the highest priority? After we asked each respondent, should this be a high, medium or low priority? Right? Because arguably, lots of things could be a high priority. And you do that not only because they can say hi to many things, but to familiarize the respondent with each of the items before they get to the point where they're going to tell you which is the highest. So if you look below the green bars, you'll see a blue bar. And notice that raising the profile as a destination city, only 28% said high priority. So even though it edged out increasing mobility by a couple of percentage points, right? The nine to seven. Increasing mobility, 47% said high priority. And then look at expanding mental health resources and investing in broadband. 57, 58% said high priority. And then when you get to the, to the two on the furthest right, even though supporting Dublin's long-term economic sustainability trumped all of the other five statements, in terms of how important people thought it was, three out of four in both cases thought it was important. So sometimes you'll just ask one of the two questions and in some ways miss the boat. Like you'll ask high, medium or low, or you'll ask which is the most important rather than asking both. So this, I think, provides you with a more accurate sense of what people were thinking.
Hey Marty, can I ask you a quick question before you move on?
Sure.
On that last slide? So in your experience here, taking surveys during COVID and right after COVID, anything on this list, if I look at the, you know, health and wellbeing and all this, is there any shadow or light that you might cast on this data that would be useful to us? Just knowing the context of the timeframe here or not?
So I think regardless of the COVID environment, that supporting Dublin's long-term economic sustainability would have been number one regardless. It may have moved up promoting health and wellbeing, but that one talks about protecting the environment. So I'm not sure that's appropriate. Investing broadband, probably not, although people are going to be home around the clock, seven days a week like they were. They may want more channels that may be more important. And 58% said it was important. Expanding mental health resources. You know, my sense is it might have been higher if folks had COVID in mind. Because it's only 13% said the top. But I don't know what it would have, the, the follow-up or the preceding question, high, medium or low priority, whether that would have been lower. Hard to know, but a good, a good thought. Seniors. So most seniors, 55 or older, that just seems like ridiculous to me. 55 or older? I just turned 70 this year and I don't think of myself as a senior. God. Okay. So, so 73% own a freestanding house or have a mortgage, I guess. But 16% are in a condo and 11% rent. And if you look at the previous two surveys, you don't see a lot of change. You don't see a lot of change. In fact, on this question, they're almost identical, certainly within sampling error. Okay, so then we say, are you going to live in Dublin indefinitely? Are you going to resettle in Ohio? Or are you going to resettle in another state? And here, once again, you don't see much change, right? More than six out of 10 seniors plan to remain in Dublin indefinitely. One out of four plans to resettle in another state. Okay, and we don't have 13 data, so we just have 22 and 16. Okay, so two out of three people essentially are going to stay in Dublin indefinitely. But this is just amazing to me. So in 2022, 82% of the people said they were going to remain in their current home as opposed to downsize. Whereas in 2016, only 74% said they're going to remain in their home. And one of the things I think may account for that in the time between 2016 and 2022, places like Friendship Village of Dublin, what they market, they call it friendship at home. So it allows people to get every level of care brought into their house. Because you probably know, most people, you know, they hold on to the door frame as they're being, you know, forced to go to a, to a, to a nursing home, for example. So this is, this is probably an, the difference is not that great, but it's, it's an important finding that the expectation that more people will stay in their home and have healthcare brought in as opposed to going to someplace like the Friendship Village campus. That was not what I was expecting, although kind of makes sense.
Marty, if I may ask a question about that. You think it has, some of that has to do with COVID and people being in their homes and really appreciating the space that they have if they're going to be there? I, I would think that would be true for a, a number of folks of just wanting.
So you can make the opposite point, that after being at home for 700 days, people want to like move on to someplace else. So it's hard, it's hard to know what causes that. And maybe if, you know, there are people are surveyed two years from now when COVID is sort of more in the rearview mirror, these numbers might change. But it looks, but it looks to me like there's something potentially going on which makes being at home beyond COVID more palatable. Because COVID or no COVID, it's my experience that seniors want to stay at home, but they get to a point where they can't. And things like friendship at home give them the possibility to do that. Digital communications. So Dublin's social networking sites are the most common source of news and information about the city. So this is just really interesting. So look at social networking sites, one from 8% to 20% to 37%. Not all that surprising. But the city websites got a big bump in 2016, not in 2022. Why? Because it's my sense that people think of websites as static, even though they're not. But social networking sites are the opposite of static. I mean, every moment, things can change. Okay, but what also, it's got to make you a believer in the data is look at the Dublin Villager from 42 to 39. That was close, plummeted to 9%. Could be 8%, could be 10%, but certainly not in the twenties or thirties. And one thing else also about the websites is not only did the usage stay pretty similar, 23 to 26, down a little, but visits, people who visited the website in the last three months from 2016 to 2022, what's that, six years, didn't change. Right? People are not going more to the website. They're going pretty much at the same rate. And why is that? Again, it's because there is a more dynamic option for getting information about the city. So that's sort of revealing. And I'm saying that because I know a lot of communities put a lot of effort into their websites. And here you see that the, for news and information, social networking really is the number one. Okay, so among Dublin residents who use social media actively, Facebook and Instagram are the most popular platforms. Hard to tell what's going on with Twitter. You know, could go up, could go down, could go away. And LinkedIn is lower because LinkedIn's a business site, so you wouldn't expect it to be high. And then Channel 4 is the most common TV outlet for local news. And so it was, that was the case kind of in 2013. BNS moved up a little to tie in 2016. And in 2022, it's half a dozen percentage points or so higher. Okay. Satisfaction with the choice of internet providers, though moderately strong, declined again in 2022 from a high in 2013, as did satisfaction with the speed of internet service. Across all three of the surveys, however, fewer residents were satisfied with the cost of internet service, as you would expect. I mean, folks typically are not satisfied with the cost of anything. But what makes this chart so powerful is the stair step monotonic decline from 2013, right? From 76 to 69 to 61 for providers and for speed from 87 to 79 to 71. To me, those are significant changes, significant jumps. And I'm sure they're not all that surprising because you probably hear that. Communications with the city. So nearly three out of four respondents agree that the input of Dublin residents has significant impact on city officials, right? The 22% that agree strongly, and then the 51% that agree somewhat. But what's really sort of interesting, I'm not sure what to make of it, is the agree strongly and agree somewhat, 73%. But among the people who said they plan to live in Dublin indefinitely, 81% agree compared to the people who are going to move out, resettle someplace else, only 66% say they agree. Right? And that sort of makes sense. I'm just not sure which way the causal arrow goes. But it's, but there is a relationship between how likely people are to remain in the community and what council does. That seems kind of important to, to know. And this was a new question, and I can't remember who, but a council member actually suggested this question. And I think it was worth including on several levels, several levels, but even if only for that, for those data in the box. And during the past year, four out of 10 residents have contacted the city to raise an issue, express a concern, get information. And what's interesting about here, though the telephone remains the most common vehicle for contacting the city, the Go Dublin app has made significant inroads. And in fact, if you subtract the change from 2016 to 2022, like the 50, for the phone, 53 to 48, someone's good with math, do this, right? So 53 minus eight, what's that difference? 25 to 19, what's that difference? 19 to eight, what's that difference? And we'll even throw in the two minus one, that equals virtually the 22% from the Dublin. So we know where that went. We know where those people went. And these are the departments that they contact with the refuse. And these are the departments that they contact, with the refuse recycling and waste yard getting a larger share, but parks and rec also pretty good. So then we get to, okay, so it's one thing that people contact the city, but are they satisfied? And here we see six out of ten are very satisfied, with another one in five somewhat satisfied for seventy-eight percent or so. But then you have those dissatisfied people, and why are they dissatisfied? So one in five, and this is a relatively small number, right? It's only, it's like twenty percent of our sample. So here, people didn't, people in the city didn't know the answer, no solution was offered, they didn't listen to me, and they got some automated response. I'm always suspicious of these data because oftentimes people have a hard time distinguishing between bad service and bad news. So you got to take that with a grain of salt. But to give you a greater flavor, I have two slides. This one, which gives you some feel for why people were very satisfied. And these are verbatim comments, and in the little tiny print, there's the department that they called. And then you have in the lower right-hand corner, you know, a shout out for the Go Dublin app. And then on the next slide, is why folks are dissatisfied. And there are more, more comments like these. This is just a sampling. You'll see underneath it says, additional comments appear in a separate document. That would be this document. Okay. Highlights. So I'm at the end. I can't remember the last time I wrote like the highlights or a conclusion on one slide. You know, it's like embarrassing. I should have worked harder to find something. Okay. So the first thing, once again, impressions of Dublin are highly positive. Indeed, across myriad dimensions involving public facilities, city officials, and city services, including the police, little has changed since 2013, when the first survey was conducted. We do, most of the surveys we do in communities are biennial, so it's not all that surprising that little changes in two years. But here, you're talking about a decade. That's really a long time for data so stable. That said, satisfaction increased notably when residents focused on the library, parking in historic Dublin and the Bridge Street District. We would expect that. By contrast, satisfaction decreased when residents focused on internet access and to a lesser extent, on residential growth and development and performing arts. Nearly three out of four survey respondents agree that the input of Dublin residents has a significant impact on city officials. That was a new question. I wanted to give it its due. Finally, when residents evaluated six initiatives the city could pursue, interest was strongest in supporting Dublin's economic sustainability. Interest was the least strong in raising Dublin's profile as a destination city. And we went through that. And then it wasn't like I was short on slides, I just had sort of nothing else to put in Questions?
Questions. Do we have some questions? Okay.
You know, on your comment about stay-at-home seniors, I was also thinking that there's really no place for them to go. If they move out of their houses today, they get a lesser house, it's smaller, plus they get fees for living there. So, you know, they may have already paid for their house and they're happy in their house because they realize to downsize is to cost them more and get less. I was just wondering if, you know, if that is in the trend.
It's real interesting. So it depends what a senior is. When we talk to seventy-five-year-olds, they think about, when they think about moving to like a rental, they do the math. They multiply four thousand dollars, whatever it is, times months, and it's really expensive. But their attitude about it change, changes in their mid-eighties because when they do the math, the number's not so big. So it really, that's why, you know, I always joke about seniors, seniors, oop, thank you, seniors at fifty-five. Because seniors, I mean, people at fifty-five are maybe knee-deep in their careers still. And, you know, I have a whole, this whole new perspective that people in their seventies are, still can be well into their careers. But in the eighties, maybe something different. So those folks, you know, you get to the point where you're getting healthcare brought in, as well as people who mow the lawn and do all the house repair, as opposed to moving and downsizing.
Marty, I don't know how much of this you've done in other Ohio communities of late. Any points of comparison for Dublin vis-à-vis?
Well, as, as a matter of public record, we have done in the past two years, most of them, most of them this year, going around the Beltway. We did Powell, we did New Albany, we did Grove City, we are about to do Whitehall, which will just be our, our third time doing them. And it's a funny thing, the, the cities that want to support this kind of research are the cities that have their act together and, you know, the, the data are strong. But remember a couple of years ago, the National Citizen Survey was done, and I can't remember the exact quote, but it's something like, of all the cities that are comparable to Dublin, because that's why you'll use National Citizens Survey, right? Because they can compare you to like cities. It's like Dublin was number one, I think. So all the cities we work for, including Whitehall, and I single them out only because it's a different demographic from the cities north of the Beltway, there, there isn't anyone we work with that has numbers like this and has had them for the past decade, which is really, I mean, the word that comes to mind first is just remarkable, that you could, that council can sustain that level. Because you would think there'd be some people who would just be snarky and like grade you badly just for the joy of it. But, you know, it's hard to find those people. And, and sort of the last point I want to make is, I go all the way back to the beginning, it's hard, if you think about all the changes over time with the methodology, it's, it's hard not, it's hard to, not to believe the data because they are so similar. So it's much harder to do. It's also more expensive, but it's at least as reliable as it used to be.
I just have a quick request. Dana, would you mind getting us a breakdown of the cost of the satisfaction survey for the last, you know, three or four surveys? And you could put it in board pack and just let us know that it's there.
Sure.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation and all the details. It was very easy to follow and I don't have any questions specific to the data. I was impressed that you actually got four hundred people to answer their phones.
Well, thank you for having me back. When we were looking for our first house, we looked in Dublin, but my bride, this is back in nineteen ninety, my bride thought, oh, Dublin, it's so far out. You know, like, it was the boon docks. And I said, no, it's, you know, look how pretty this is. There's a big golf course here. So we moved a little bit down the road in Hilliard, it was a little closer to the, where the parade of homes was in eighty-eight. But, yeah, so I'm always happy to come up here and work with Lindsay, city manager, and all you folks.
Marty, I have a question for you. The global city getting the, the least response for being a priority, were there any comments that would lead us to understand? Oh, you know, because one of our, one of our visions is to be the most connected, resilient global city of choice. And I'm wondering if there was anything in the comments that would lead us to understand why they didn't see a global city destination of choice being something that was attractive to them.
So that's a really interesting thing, the notion of being a regional destination. So when I read the comments from the, from the short survey I was making categories, and one of them was being a, being a destination. And that's where, if you read my text, it was like this swimming pool for regional meets, that language came from those comments. And I thought, boy, that's a whole big difference. Because there was suggestions for transportation, bringing folks into Dublin, and, and I think about Powell, the people who moved to Powell, moved there because of the atmosphere, small-town atmosphere. When we asked folks, what do you like most about Powell? It was small-town atmosphere. They could have lived, you know, south inside the Beltway. And I get the sense that Dublin is not all that unlike Powell in that sense. To become a regional center changes the character of the neighborhood. It may change the economics, maybe for the better, but it changes the character of the neighborhood, and it seems that would be a seismic shift in what's preceded, if, you know, that becomes the direction.
So you think they, the intention in their comment would be that they love all of the venues, all of the attractions, but to change the DNA or the character of the town would be something that would not be attractive?
Yeah. And they like all of these benefits of living here for themselves and their family. And like this, but this, I mean, why wouldn't they, right? They don't want a bunch of strangers coming in and, you know, taking, buying all the tickets or taking all the seats. It's selfish, but they live here, so they're entitled to be selfish.
Well, we thank you so very much. And, and to have a pep talk like this, we could do this every council meeting, don't you think? We appreciate it.
I'd be the first one here.
Thank you so much. Next is staff comments, Dana.
Yeah. And before I get into those, I just, I just want to thank Lindsay and I want to thank Marty for all the great work on this. I was a nervous wreck about doing this because how do you do this coming out of two years of COVID and the disruption and the challenges? And it's just a tribute to yourselves, your leadership through that and the staff, to be able to, and I said, you know, I'm going to retire with that overall approval rating tanking. And I thought, great, I didn't want to do it, did I? I was pretty resistant about it. But, I mean, to go up a point from ninety-eight to ninety-nine on the heels of COVID is just phenomenal, that's a tribute to everyone, so, and, and to our community. So congratulations. Our, it's our residents and volunteers and businesses and everyone also contribute to making this such a great community. So, anyway, having said that, I have a few things. First, I, I do want to also acknowledge Deputy Chief Tavernick and say congratulations for his graduation at the FBI Academy, but as much so, I want to thank him and his family because that is an in-service school. It's not something you do by correspondence. You go to Quantico, Virginia, I do believe. Is it Quantico? Yeah. Been there, done that to some degree, not nice place, but not a place you want to hang out for a long time. Anyway, appreciate their sacrifice and that of his family. Congratulations, Nick. Also want to congratulate our CPI staff. They won four, the city won four awards at the Central Ohio Public Relations Society of America, or the PRSA Awards. They got a, a best of show. And when I say they, it's the community that got it for the diversity, equity, inclusion They also got a, several other awards that were around diversity, inclusion, they got another one on that. And then also recognition of an award of excellence for the rebranding of the Abbey Theatre, which you all participated in and, and approved. And then an award of excellence for special event and observance regarding the St. Patrick's Day reverse parade. So, you know, we're proud of the trophies when we get them, but as I always remind staff and everyone, that it's, you certainly want to be proud of it. And I got two of those awards, I should have brought them, you put them on my desk when I came back from vacation today, but should have brought them down here. But the point of it is, it's just, it's, it's just great validation of what we do. It's not so much the bling, I always call it, as it is the validation. So congratulations to, to Lindsay and of course, everyone who had involvement in doing those things. A couple of other things, wanted to mention that the pop-up Dublin retail debuts at sixty-three South High Street this Saturday from one to eight in the historic district. It's been the result of an extensive collaboration between the city and our partners, which include Dublin Arts Council, Visit Dublin Ohio, Historic Dublin Business Association. It's going to be open every Wednesday from four to eight and Saturdays from one to eight. Those correspond not only with Adora, but also some of the Historic Dublin Business Association events that, that go on, so why that was picked, so that those could work together. So far, we have fifty vendors scheduled. Vendors are currently limited to participating only three days per month to offer a variety of options for patrons. There's a, a room for two vendors inside the historic home, two in the garage, and there'll be six on the lawn, I would assume weather permitting. There's a ten-vendor limit through the end of October because obviously things will change and have to go only inside. But November, December are completely booked by vendors and several dates through October are also full. So a great response so far to those who want to be there and give this a try. And I thank you for supporting the idea of a beta test, which is what this is about, and just add a little something down on South High Street for people to partake in. So I want to, want to thank Kendall and Emily who are here, I want to thank them for all their extra effort on making this happen, and our, and again, our partners. Also, just want to lift up a memo that was in your packet about a meeting that was held that Council Member Keeler attended, as well as Deputy City Manager Brant attended with Visit Dublin, and it was in regards to potential of a, an analysis regarding sports facilities with a company called Sports Facilities Companies. And I had a conversation with both Scott Dring from Visit Dublin, as well as Jim Arnold with Sports Facilities Company. I'm going to let them expand on any of the conversations if they'd like to, but I think the so what of it is, Visit Dublin was interested in pursuing a study on their own about the notion of expanded sports complexes and the things like that. Kind of ties back, it does tie directly back into the conversation that you had in your work session and adoption of the direction that you gave us on your goal three, which has to do with potentially, I'm paraphrasing, a sort of a, not a shift, but an addition in your economic development strategy around larger events and other events and other venues. So with that, I'm going to shut up, I'll hand it over to Andy and/or, and Robert, if you have any other comments you want to add to that.
Not much to add. Scott has been very open and eager to get this conversation moving. He presented earlier this year and the meeting that the Deputy City Manager and I had with him and the gentleman, I guess brought a lot of potential opportunities to light, one of which is the potential, and this could be controversial, but potential outsourcing of staffing and operations of the rec center, just to, due to their expertise in the area. So that's something we could potentially explore down the road. The Executive Committee of Visit Dublin will be presenting their recommendation to pursue that initial study at their August fifteenth board meeting. So that's really the next step. They're covering the cost. This initial study is basically a feasibility study like we had talked about doing for the Performing Arts Center. Hopefully, we're, we're still planning on doing that after seeing the data tonight. So we'll keep you posted on that. Thank you.
Yeah. I, I would just add that that, that study will be focused again on the sports complex concept. A staff goes, will, will monitor. I think they're, they would, they would fund the study. They, they didn't ask for any funding from us or anything like that, so we would just monitor. The other thing to clarify too, right, or I didn't mention, was that we also have, you know, the Parks Master Plan processes is going on. You also have this goal regarding expanded potential for attraction of events and so forth, which could include sports types venues. So, you know, these things could, could occur. So, you know, these things could occur concurrently, as opposed, and actually help to inform each other as they go along. And rather than doing them sequentially, where you've got to wait on the other, I don't see that that's an issue, if they really want to pursue this, as a way to inform that other, you know, that other Parks Master Plan process. So, anyway, just to add, I don't know if that's helpful or not, or try to clarify, so I hope it didn't make it more confusing. So, other than that, I have nothing else to report unless you have any questions of me.
I just have one question for Andy about the feasibility study. The intention of it is to find out, you know, whether or not it's profitable, you know, what it costs and that sort of thing, I'm assuming. But my next question is, the group that they're considering, they run these, so is it, would it be an objective feasibility study? Because there is some opportunity that would come at the other end of it. So, did they discuss that at all? I'm kind of curious.
So, most of the facilities that we have around the country are privately managed, they're not city-run. In the example, in the packet, Cedar Point, there were contributions made by the county, there were contributions made by the city of Sandusky, $2 million. But the ongoing operations is handled by a professional management company that has expertise in doing that. This initial study is really looking at the opportunities that we have, the needs. So, we had a Parks and Recreation Master Plan meeting, public meeting, a month ago, and we heard from residents that they want athletic fields, they want swimming pools, they want all these things. So, what we heard loud and clear is that while this is a, it would help make Dublin a destination city, as Carmel, Indiana is, and Sandusky are, for folks that are in athletics, it will also serve as sort of an auxiliary public resident venue for sports and activities. Does that answer your question?
It does. It was primarily about the person, the organization doing the study, because they would have, you know, it seems as if they come back and say that this is extremely feasible for you, and we'd like to be the one operating that. I was just looking for the objectivity of the feasibility study. And I, but I don't know how, who usually does these feasibility studies, if they're normally done by, excuse me, private organizations like that.
That's a very good question. I think, you know, what you're getting at is, there could be a potential conflict of interest or a motivation for them telling us that we should do it. My initial thought is, we let Visit Dublin go down that road, come back, and if we want to engage other consulting firms, if we think it deserves a closer look, we do that at that point.
I would only offer up, too, like the facility in, outside, in Westfield, Indiana, outside of Carmel. You know, the management would go out to bid. Because these people do the studies, doesn't mean that they would be the individuals that would be able to have the management of the facility. So, those would be two separate things. I think the feasibility study is one thing, but, you know, then the construction of the facility would be another, but then the management of it, that would be, go out to bid. So, they wouldn't necessarily, just because they did this, get that contract.
Thank you, Dana, appreciate it. We're on to committee reports. Administrative Committee, Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Nothing, thank you.
Community Development Committee, Mr. Reiner.
Meeting August the 15th, 4:30.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Ms. Aluto.
Nothing, thank you.
All right. Public Services Committee, Ms. Graham.
Our meeting is August 10th.
All right, thank you. Liaison Reports, Dublin Board of Education.
Nothing.
Vice Mayor DeRosa, US 33 corridor.
Next meeting is up and coming.
All right. Mr. Keeler, Logan Union Champagne County Regional Planning Commission and US Corridor.
Nothing to report.
33 corridor. All right. Mr. Reiner, Dublin Arts Council.
Dave already covered it.
All right. Veterans Committee.
Veterans Committee is going to have something called Hero Hut at the Dublin Irish Festival, and it's a, going to be a series of tables that they can access to find out different benefits that they might become available to them. Also, the Veterans Committee is somewhat concerned about the high rate of suicides with veterans. There's been 30,177 of them, and only 7,057 combat deaths since 9/11. So, we're trying to program to reach out and find as many veterans as we can, talk to them, make them part of the community. I think at the parade, it was really interesting, because some of these people stepped off of the curb and started walking down the street, and really felt good about the hand-waving and the congratulations they received for being veterans. So, I think that's going to be another mission for the veterans, to try to help out our local veterans and the regional veterans. And that's the latest from the Veterans Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Graham, Washington Township.
Mathan to report.
All right. Ms. Amros Grooms, Mitterhart Regional Planning Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yeah, you may or may not have heard, you probably have, that the Linkus will not go to a ballot initiative in this upcoming ballot. The polling information indicated that there really had not been sufficient education of the community at large to really rally behind funding that, and the competition of other ballot initiatives that will be on the ballot for the majority of the voters is pretty significant. And so, that conversation has been going on with some strategy of how to get ready for the next ballot initiative, if that would be, if that would be the selected process. Then I did want to let you know that I met with Matt Dietrich, who is the CEO of the Ohio Rail Commission. In light of Linkus not moving forward, we still have significant transportation challenges ahead of us. And the tone of the conversation was really about the corridors, more than it was about the tracks, and how could these corridors be beneficial to communities like Dublin who have access, direct access to them. So, I suspect that this will be a continuing conversation. My interaction with him is largely directed in my position with Morpsey as the Vice Chair, but certainly look out for Dublin's interest there as well. So, you know, I don't know exactly what it's going to be, but, you know, we all have decided collectively that we want to be ready for those corridors and for, if it be rail, Hyperloop, whatever the next technology might be. They likely would utilize corridors that already exist, because the acquisition of future corridors would be virtually impossible of large scale. So, I'll keep you informed of that conversation. It was just an initial conversation. There'll be a lot, a lot more to come, I hope, in the future, but we certainly have, you know, with the rising gas prices and all of these things, where we need to figure out. And truthfully, how, I was impressed with how important the environment was to our residents, that kind of jumped off the page to me. So, we need to be looking for environmentally friendly ways and that we can promote transportation in the future. So, I'll keep you posted on that conversation, but it's encouraging at this point in time. Relative to the Planning and Zoning Commission, I, we, they are, they're doing really good work. They've had some significant challenges recently, but they're being very savvy in terms of how they approach developments, and the contemplation of the issues has really been a great dialogue. So, they're doing great work.
Thank you. All right, let's see, we are at roundtable, so, would you like to start, Ms. Aluto?
Sure thing, thank you. Just a couple of quick things, really looking forward to having a normal Irish festival. So, that is right around the corner, on the 5th, 6th, and 7th. I know that date well, it is also my daughter's 21st birthday. Remember that back to school is also right around the corner, so from a traffic perspective and looking out for kids, please make sure that you do so. The buses will start running their routes pretty soon to practice, and then those kiddos will be out there waiting for the buses before you know it, so please be careful out there. And then just a quick reminder to everybody that the National Suicide Hotline, 988, is now live and active. So, I urge anyone that may have suicidal thoughts or ideation to call that number. You might not necessarily get somebody that's local to you. Eventually, that's where they'll head, is they'll have people who are more local to where you're actually calling from. But that's a really, really critical and important number to remember, and that's 988 for the National Suicide Prevention Line. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Amros Grooms, would you like to make any comments?
Just wanted, we haven't really been together since the 4th of July, so it was a really great celebration. Appreciate all the overtime and time away from your individual celebrations for that. I think the community, that all of the feedback that I received was really positive on the parade and the concert that evening, and I thought the fireworks were some of the best that I've seen in the community. I thought they were particularly wonderful this year. It was, it was good to be together. And then I just, having watched the world championships the last few nights, it's really a great honor to have a two-time world champion call Dublin home. It was really fun to watch, and want to just send real sincere congratulations to Abby Steiner and her family. And I can only imagine the surreal nature of being able to stand next to your idols and having competed against them. So, it's great for this community and certainly wonderful for her and her family.
So, I also want to thank all of our staff and all of our volunteer residents, everyone came out for 4th of July. I had a wonderful time, it's the first time I've participated in many years, I'm usually out of town that weekend, and I was very glad to be here. The second thing I wanted to bring up, I learned about recently, and the government's really trying to push it, is the Affordable Connectivity Program. So, speaking of broadband tonight, I think a lot more residents and individuals are eligible for the FCC credit than, or, and that they don't know about it. So, I would urge staff to maybe try to promote that, to get some information out. The FCC.gov/ACP for Affordable Connectivity Program describes the program, there's applications, and I think everyone would appreciate that, if they can get it, their 30%, or $30 discount on their internet bill. And the last thing I wanted to say today was that I'm really proud to announce that my fellow Dublin High School graduate over here and friend, Councilmember Chris Amros Grooms, will be honored in September as a 2022 inductee into the Dublin City Schools Hall of Fame.
So, I would like to echo the comments about the fourth celebration, the Independence Day, a lot of effort, always phenomenal celebration, and the parade gives you faith and humanity and happiness and all the other things that go along with it when you go down Bridge Street and turn that corner onto South High. It's just amazing, the turnout. I'd like to thank the chief for offering his officer craft, who happened to be in the back of the room earlier this evening. Officer craft helped me understand the noise enforcement tools that they're using, how they're enforcing that. As you know, we've had some complaints from residents, and me included, the noise down in the Bridge Street area and historic district is kind of annoying if you're trying to have dinner or have a ceremony of any, of any kind. So, I want to thank Officer craft for showing me how it worked, and I tested my own vehicle, which has the ability to be obnoxiously loud. But what I discovered, and I suspected the whole time, is if you drive responsibly, normally, it's not a problem. So, hopefully, word gets around that we're not going to tolerate excessive noise. Thank you.
Mr. Reiner.
Yeah, I'd like to give a shout-out, maybe even this falls under the Arts Department, but the Ohio Methodist Hospital is completely rehabbing their entryway and their water feature and their landscaping, and they put like, gosh, 2,000 perennials up on their roof. They got a fantastic garden. Hopefully, none of us will have to come up to look at it, but it's really inspiring, because they've always had this positive vibe of sort of a cool, healthy look with their paintings and everything. So, I want to thank Dave Price over there in Mindy for the rehab on that particular facility, it is really looking sharp. And as you know, it was, and has been, and still is, the place, if you're going to have a baby, it's the choice because of how they set up the suites up there and everything. So, congratulations to them, it's just really good to see them put the kind of money and effort into the, they got a rehab going all over that hospital right now. So, get a chance, and you're over that way, stop in. Thank you.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Thank you. I may sound repetitive, but there's always time to say thank you one more time for the staff, for their incredible work on the 4th and what I know will be at the Irish Festival. I know this is incredibly busy time, lots of overtime. I just want to echo just how happy, and I'll use the word joyous, that the residents are to get to celebrate again. I mean, the excitement around the Irish Festival, the excitement about these things. I know it's hard work time for you, but I just wanted to reiterate that it brings tremendous joy, so thank you for that. And Marty, I have to say, your presentation made me feel proud this evening and continued commitment to keep up that level of excellence. I mean, I know it's the staff, incredible work and leadership, Dana, thank you for all of that, that makes all that work, but it's just so heartwarming to hear it and see it and to recognize the responsibility that we all have to continue to do that work, but I know collectively, we will. So, my message tonight is just thank you.
Thank you. And then we'll finish up this evening, a couple of shout-outs. I want to say how appreciative we are on three long-term retirements that are coming up. Chaplain Steve Norden has been here since 1990, and there will be a celebration at 4:00 PM this Wednesday at the REC Center. He has been here for our police force and for all of us for quite a long time, and we want to thank him for all the years of service he's given us, as well as Joanne Muthar, who is a property technician in the Police Department, has been here for 30 years, yes. And so, we want her to know for sure that we appreciate her. And Sue Ackey, who is a custodial maintenance worker, and she's been here for 21 years. So, we want to, we want to thank them. That's a long time to stay with a, with an organization and to give the kind of care that they do. The other thing I want to bring up is, I have a letter here that's written for the possibility of renewing our Friendship City with Dublin, Ireland. There was some discussion about sister cities, and I know in the past, other council members have discussed this. Unless you feel differently, we were just going to try to pursue renewing our Friendship City status. The city's sister city status requires a quite a much larger commitment, and the intention here is to maintain our relationship with Dublin, Ireland. And when Daniel Mahal was here, Mahal was here, the ambassador to Ireland, he made a small promise, when we were entertaining him, that he would be more than happy to write a letter of recommendation to the new Lord Mayor of Dublin. So, we think this is a grand opportunity, and if you're all okay with that, we'll get this letter sent off, and hopefully, we'll get a renewal on the Friendship City status. And then, we need to say happy birthday to Councilman Keeler last week, and also to Councilman Reiner this week, so happy birthday. And if there is nothing...
I was going to say, and thank you for the birthday card I received in the mail.
That's right.
Because, like it always happened in grade school and all through school, everyone's on vacation when my birthday happens in July.
Happy birthday, Amy. Other than that, if we have no other further business, we will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you. Have a good evening.